All right, let's get the meeting started. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Crone. I'm the vice chairman of the Finance Committee, and I will be chairing the meeting tonight in the absence of John Lor, who is the chairman and who is traveling. I'd like the committee to introduce themselves, starting with my left.
Saraias.
Joyce Voyardi.
Peter Underhill.
Jody Garzon.
Kathy McInnes.
Pete Berube.
Chen Zerutsky.
And I'll remind the members of the board that speak as closely to the microphone as possible so that everybody can hear us. All right, we have our agenda. Tonight is the pre-town meeting. What we'll do this evening is go through the town warrant articles. The committee has already voted on the articles as is stated in the town warrant, so you know what our positions are already. We won't be discussing our positions, but we're opening this up for comment by the public, for any questions, concerns, discussion regarding any of the warrant articles in anticipation of town meeting next week. So that being said, why don't we start with Article number one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and raise by taxation or by transfer from available funds the sum of $45,209.55 front paid bills from a prior fiscal year, or take any other action relating thereto. The bills that are here stipulated in the warrant article, these are bills that were not paid in the last fiscal year and that need to be paid. Oftentimes, this is because the bills come in late. So is there any discussion, questions, concerns regarding this article? Okay, there being none, let's look at Article two. Article two, see if the town will vote to transfer from marijuana impact funds the sum of $137,503 for additional wages and expenses not sufficiently funded under Article three operating budgets of the May 7, 2024 annual town meeting as follows, and it's the items are stipulated in the warrant article. Are there any questions regarding this warrant article and discussion? Okay, there being none. We will go to Article three. Which of you has Article three? Why don't you just talk about this?
Sure. Article three is appropriating $15,000 for signage for public open spaces around town. This comes from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund. That is a specific fund set up for this purpose. It does not come from the general fund or any other form of taxation. It's a 1% surcharge on the transfer of property deeds.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, concerns regarding this article? All right, there being none, let's go to Article four.
That one's mine, too. That is to appropriate the sum of $125,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Fund for the Lansing-Millis Building Exterior Repair Project. This is half of the funds stated that is needed to seal the exterior envelope of the building. The other half will be coming up in Article five as part of that omnibus article. These funds, like the previous article, are from the preservation funds, that is from the transfer of deeds and titles. This will not be coming from the general fund or increasing any taxation.
Any questions or concerns? Any discussion? Yes, please speak, come up to the microphone, and please give your name and address.
John Sussman, 34 Beach Street.
Speak as closely as you can to the microphone, please.
You got it. Actually, this just occurred to me, so if Article--
You have to talk into the microphone.
That close, yes. Should Article five, for whatever reason, not pass, what happens to the money under Article four? Do you appropriate it anyway and just do half or half the anticipated job on Lansing-Millis?
That would be something for the preservation--
We have a member of the select board here to speak to this article. Thank you for the question.
It's a long walk to say--
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Craig Schultz, 330 Plain Street Select Board, clerk. It's a long walk to say I'm not exactly sure what happens with it. I don't think it's a half a project. I think you have to do all of it. So if the second Article, Article five, failed, I'm not sure exactly what would happen. I don't think $125 would be enough to do it. Yeah.
Any other questions? Commentary, anyone? Nope. All right. We can move on to Article five. And who has this one?
I've been designated to take care of it for the chair, who is also our rep on the Capital Planning Committee. So the Capital Planning Committee has reviewed numerous projects which are listed in the town meeting report, Finance Committee report. The Capital Planning Committee report is in there. The Capital Planning Committee reviews projects for criticality, potential cost savings, or revenue generation, and a variety of factors that have been, that process has been in place for numerous years, probably at least, I want to say, seven years. And in this go-around, the Capital Planning Committee submitted a number of projects for, they prioritized those projects and provided them to the select board for selection. And so this, these six projects are those that the select board put forth to fund out of free cash this go-around. Typically, projects, capital expenditures are made during the fall cycle, and in this case, they are amount, they are listed, so I'm not going to go through them individually, but they are listed, and they total $704, excuse me, $5,147. They would be paid out of free cash. At town meeting, it would require a majority vote, and the Finance Committee recommended passing these on a vote of seven to two.
Any discussion? Please step up.
John Sussman, 34 Beach Street. So this is really the article I was most curious about. Mr. Chair, you had mentioned that you weren't going to be really engaging in discussion because it's already been voted upon, so I'll--
I didn't say we weren't going to engage in discussion. We are engaging in discussion.
Well, I mean, you're not going to respond necessarily to questions regarding it--
Sure, we will.
--any way or another.
No, I didn't say that. We will.
I misunderstood that.
We're not going to go through--
Re-vote.
We're not going to re-vote or go through our discussions amongst ourselves again.
Understood.
But we certainly are here to answer the questions that the public has.
Certainly. Well, I appreciate that. So I guess what I'm curious about is in two parts, and I've been, I've been working with a number of members of the community to generate more information sharing. Folks tend have, that I've encountered in town have tended to struggle with sort of the basics of how town, town politics functions and how policy decisions are made. So one of the things I've been doing lately is working with a lot of folks in town to try and fill those gaps as best as I am able, and frankly, I have a lot to learn as well. What I'm curious about is, I read the Capital Planning Report, and that report, as Mr. Berube mentioned, had three different levels of priority affiliated with the different line items here. So I guess my question is in two parts. I'll start with the first, that why risk the vital line items in this article that the Capital Planning Committee identified as high priority by inserting medium and low priority items in the same article? And my follow-up question is, essentially, and listen, I, this is not a judgment, it's just an acknowledgement of fact, we're getting off of now a second vote on the override, and the town has overwhelmingly indicated they're concerned about money. If nothing else, right, they're worried about spending. You know, you could speculate on what else that result means, but if nothing else, they're worried about spending. And if there's discretionary articles included with vital articles, as the Capital Planning Committee identified, the police fire special education vehicles, and we're jeopardizing that by inserting it in the same article and not pushing back by a vote of seven to two and saying, had you considered splitting this up into even priority levels, high, medium, and low priority articles? It is not, in my personal judgment, obviously, reflecting the concern that is, in my view, made very clear by recent votes by the public. And I just hope you would both acknowledge that, but also discuss that matter tonight on why you decided to leave the article as is. Would you like me to remain here, or?
Yeah, you can stay right there. Well, first off, we've had multiple discussions about this, and there has been some objective discussion. Some have beat, for instance, was not in favor of some of the items or one of the items in it. So we've had a spirited discussion about what should be and should not be included. Most of that discussion was done by the Capital Planning Committee. They've looked at all of this over a number of years. They take a look at things that are absolutely vital and have to be done. They took, take a look at things that really should be done. They take a look at things that maybe can wait. They chose these articles, and we looked at them, and we felt that what justification they had for these articles made sense to the majority of us, and that's why we voted in favor of this warrant article. We do have the DPW director here who can speak to any articles that relate to DPW process. We don't have the fire chief or the police chief here, but I don't think you have a concern with those. And as to the second part of your question, that people are concerned about, you know, expenses and costs and taxes. We all are citizens here, so we are all concerned by that. In fact, this committee, its sole purpose is to make a determination as to whether or not budgetary items brought before us on warrant articles make sense for the community. We don't vote, we should not vote our own wallet. We should vote for things that are good for the town. As much as I would like to say no to some things, if it's good for the town, I'm not going to vote my wallet, and I don't think anybody else here on the committee does that either. So we do think in terms of what is best for the community and how best we can possibly keep costs low. We're all concerned about that, and I think this Finance Committee for the last 40 years has been very concerned about that. So believe me, we are concerned, and we do take that into consideration in all of our votes. Was there any specific item in this warrant article that you're concerned with?
I apologize if I was unclear. I have no personal opinion on any individual item. My only concern was, why were different priority items kept in the same article? So I have no specific concern than anything. I agree with you. It comes down to, you need to make decisions that enable the voter to vote their conscience, and I appreciate that. My sole concern is, why combine three different levels identified by the Capital Planning Committee? And can I, if I may, can I just clarify, so the Capital Planning Committee suggested that these items be listed together?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Schultz.
The design, Craig Schultz, 330 Plain Street Select Board. I'll say that each time now.
Just Craig Schultz is fine.
The capital, the warrant creation is the sole purview of the select board. Years ago, and so the select board is the committee that decided to lump them all together. Years ago, there was a committee, the Town Meeting Study Committee, that was called in by moderator Underhill, where we, yeah, no relation, where we studied how to speed town meeting up, because the concern was town media is running for, well, till midnight. So one of the suggestions out of that committee was lump-like articles together, and one of the items that seemed like, that's where the consensus article came in that shows up periodically, and that's also where lumping all the capital items together as one article came from. We will pull out things that require borrowing, because that takes a two-thirds majority, but things that are just a simple majority, we've lumped together. All of those can be amended, and all of those can be changed on town meeting floor. And last year, for instance, we left off the DPW, no, the school skid steer, and we left off this scissor lift. We didn't include those last year because they didn't seem to rise to the level. This year, the skid steer wasn't proposed, and there was a better case made for the scissor lift. And I serve on the Capital Planning Committee as well. But the other items, just if you have any question about the items, I can answer those too. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, oh, go right ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead, Joyce.
So one of the things that the Capital Planning Committee also highlighted when they presented to us was the difficulty in rating the Lansing-Millis Building Repair Project, because it didn't neatly fit into the criteria of that high, medium, and low, because it's an historic building. So, you know, this has been a process over several years of figuring out how we as a town want to prioritize capital planning, actually do capital planning. When I first joined the Finance Committee, we didn't have a capital planning report, process, anything, so we have come a long way. They do a lot of work, very detailed work, but it's still an evolving process, as we're finding out with an historic building project, which doesn't neatly fit into the need-based prioritization of these different projects.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, it was Joyce.
Sir, you struck a burr, and I only, I'm saying that people don't have an opportunity to know what's going on in the town, and I need to address that. There are ample ways of people finding out what's going on in town. One of the ways is to attend meetings, another is to watch the meetings on Zoom. We are recorded, the, all of these committees are recorded. You can participate with them if you choose to on Zoom. You can see them in person, or you can contact the people who are involved with it. So our government in this town is very transparent in how we operate. So to say that people don't know how to get the answers, there are ways of getting the answers. So my way was to start attending. Another way is to be a member of this board, and I take offense that people are saying that they can't get information.
Craig.
I have a very mundane comment after Joyce's, but we are reevaluating the whole rubric use. We're talking about adding another criteria besides public safety, health, and well-being, something along the lines of cultural, historic, and recreational, you know, value to the town, which would dramatically change the points on a lot of things. We've never had a project like this come before us. Everything else has been quite black and white, tasers, trucks versus dump trucks versus fire trucks. It's all that kind of stuff. So there, and the committee itself discussed this. This was a great opportunity for us to learn from it. We didn't have that criteria in place for this year, but I fully expect the committee is going to change that for the next town meeting.
Thank you. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of points. I served on the Capital Planning Committee for a few years, so I am familiar with the process and how the process has been refined and evolved. I just wanted to make maybe a couple of points to all comments that have been said. One, the Capital Planning Committee, when they review these, when they review these projects, they're, what we had termed, and sorry for the lack of a better term, but were cost-agnostic, it's important to remember, so that the projects are reviewed on a standalone basis, regardless of what the ticket is, the potential price of the project, it's the same criteria, again, safety, impact to the community, whether it, and the only way it gets into cost is perhaps if a project were to generate revenue or promote cost savings for the operational budget of the town. But in terms of the project value, that doesn't factor into the ranking of the Capital Planning Committee. So I think that's important to note. One other, a couple of other notes. I did not vote in favor of this project, and it was mainly because of one particular item that I have referenced, although I do support, and perhaps I should have voted in favor of it. I knew that this was going to pass.
Which project are you--
I'm going to go to that.
Are you referring, no, are you referring to the renovations?
No, I'm sorry, I'm still on Article five.
Article five, okay.
And the part that I personally have a hang-up on is on the aerial boom lift. It's not because I didn't think that it would be not needed or not used, I just think that the better way to provide a boom lift for our town employees to use would be to rent it. I think that's more cost-efficient. I absolutely don't think that we should be climbing on ladders, as we had that discussion. I think we should have a lift, but I think the most cost-effective way is likely to rent it. That said, I support these other projects, and I do think that the select, I do support the inclusion of most of these projects with that one exception. And I would just say that typically, some of the lower priority projects that show up on this list are very much smaller ticket items, and they make it above the select, and you would have to watch the select board's deliberations on how they came up with these, because we don't. We vote on the article and the warrant that's put before us. And I think it's important to note that we had, for this budget cycle, over three, almost three and a half million dollars of free cash to consider for spending, and this only represents a very small portion of that, and I think you have to keep that in perspective. So I did vote no against it, for, against the article. I knew it was going to pass, and I just wanted to kind of make my feelings known and vote my conscience. And I'm not falling on my sword, you know, and I'm not going to stand up and argue against it at town meeting. This committee has spoken, I respect the decision. Thanks.
Jonathan? Okay, Jim?
I just wanted to briefly reply, Ms. Voyardi. I didn't say or imply that the town isn't transparent. What I said was that people are struggling to understand how things function in town and how policy decisions are made.
I understand that.
That is not my opinion. Just a moment, please.
Let's let everybody talk.
That is not my opinion. That is the input I've received from literally dozens of people. I've generated a group of people that is now over 200, and they've come to me and explained they struggle. I don't mean to imply that you're doing it maliciously, or that there's some effort to be non-transparent. What I do say is that they struggle, which is understandable when people's priority is putting food on their plates, and that they can't attend meetings on a regular basis. They do the best they can with what they have. Sometimes they can attend, sometimes they can't, but I would say without hesitation that most people in this town cannot attend these meetings as regularly as I do, and cannot spend the time understanding all the nuances of these meetings the way I do and that you all do, and that they are not the brain trust in how the town functions that you all are. So I just want to be clear, that is not at all what I said or implied, and I should add, with all due respect, man, and absolute acknowledgement of your role, that when I provide feedback to my government, my last concern is whether or not I have offended you.
Oh, I didn't--
Okay, okay, I don't want to get into a back and forth on this. Hold on, hold on. I don't want to get into a back and forth on this.
Please let me just say one thing.
No, let's stop right there. Understand something, town government is complex. State government is more complex. Federal government is much more complex. The only way you can understand it is to become part of it. I served on the Finance Committee of another town many, many years ago. It took me an entire year to figure out a town budget. I went to college, I went to law school, I wasn't a dummy. It's not easy, but it's not for somebody to synthesize for an entire community either. It's incumbent upon all of the members of the community to be active, to pay attention, to read, to listen, and to participate, and that is the only way you are going to understand town government. If we rely on somebody to synthesize that for us, we're only getting that party's position. So if you really want to understand it, to all of those who are listening tonight, please participate. We'd love to have you. We sit at this meeting, we've been sitting here almost weekly for the last three months, and I haven't seen this many people at any meeting. We're lucky if we get one person from the community at a meeting, and we discuss all of these issues. So, Mr. McKay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim McKay, Director of Public Works. I just wanted, the process that we follow is, it's a lengthy process that, I'll speak for the DPW, and most of the other department has followed the same process. When we look for a capital item, we first consult with the town administrator. If the need, and if he feels that the need is warranted, the next step is we go to the select board, we go to the Capital Planning Committee, we go to the Finance Committee for final approval. When the Capital Planning Committee was first designed, we had to submit a list of everything that the department owns, from buildings to vehicles, and they have that, they have, what's prioritized. A part of the process of, like the fields, let's just take the fields, that's on there, and it's on the list of an $8 million project that still is in the capital process of needing to be fixed. So with the trucks, we look at a truck, a pickup truck, we put a year on, like a pickup truck's 10 years. A dump truck, I mean, the dump truck that we're looking to replace is 29 years old, and we're forced with a mandate from the state, we did get a one-year reprieve, that we're not going to be able to buy diesel trucks any longer. They're going to have every vehicle, large vehicle that we're going to have to purchase, it's going to have to be a battery-operated vehicle. So that's why we push that one a little bit forward, ahead of the small little dump trucks. So there is a process, and I just want everybody to know, and I think you all know that process because you see me here, you know, two, three times a year, asking for a dump truck or a pickup truck or anything else like that. But even before we get to that point, you know, the town administrator, we all sit down and we capitalize what's, what is needed for that project. On the boom lift, just a quick synopsis on that, we used to, I'm sure you heard the stories over the years, that we used to get a truck from, it was usually from Medfield or Medway, they had their own bucket truck that we used to borrow, and we used to, but they don't have them any longer. So now we do rent them. There's much more work that can be done with the boom truck, and when that question's asked at town meeting, I'll get up and explain more about it, in the need of it. We do rent it. This past year, we spent over $6,000-plus, but it's not the idea of what we, it's what we could do with it, meaning, you know, when a neighbor calls up and they say that they have a tree limb, well, we have, now, we don't have the ability to go out and take that tree limb down, but for a truck like this, we would be able to do it. So it just sits there until we capitalize on, if it's not a danger, we wait till we hire a tree company to come in and do it, and that's $3,500 a day for that tree company to come in, which, in that budget, has been depleted, and we're already out of funds for that for the remaining of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions regarding Article five? All right, there being no others, we will move on to Article six.
Okay, speaking of only a year on the committee and multiple degrees, and I'm probably going to bungle this. All right. Okay, so we're now going to talk about Article six, which requests to transfer the sum of $500,000 from free cash to cover road and sidewalk construction, design, maintenance, and repair costs throughout the town. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended approval of this at the voting meeting, so I'll open it up for discussion.
Any discussion, questions, concerns? Okay, there being none, let's move to Article seven.
Sidewalks are always possible.
Yeah. Who has Article seven?
That would be me.
Article seven is authorizing the town to vote to borrow the sum of $68,816 for the lease/purchase of one police cruiser.
Any discussions? My understanding is we've already, this has already been done, it's just a matter of giving the authorization to go forward with the borrowing.
Right, yeah.
It was voted on town meeting in May.
The funding was approved in the FY '25 budget at the spring town annual meeting.
Yes.
So this is just authorizing the, getting, entering into the contract to lease the cruiser.
You know you're doing well when Craig slides.
I was waiting, I was waiting for him to see what he was going to do.
Any questions on this? All right, no further discussion? Okay, Article eight.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Article eight is a request to borrow from the Water Enterprise Fund in order to fund $253,167 for contingency funds. At the fall town meeting last year, Millis voters approved appropriation of $7.1 million to fund construction of a PFAS plant at well three. Since then, the design has been completed, construction bids have been received, and the apparent best offer is $6.38 million with, you add engineering fees onto that, $653,000, and that only leaves about $86,000 for potential contingency funds, which is not enough. It's not adequate for a size, a project of this size and this scope. So that's why this request is made to the town meeting to vote to approve those $253,167 to supplement the contingency fund should an unforeseen circumstance arise during construction. It should be noted that the same company that built the PFAS plant at wells one and two is the apparent best offer for the plant at well three, and the project at wells one and two was successfully built on time and on budget and is operating as intended.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Any questions, concerns?
If I could just add, and I think I forgot, this requires, at town meeting, it will require a two-thirds vote, and we voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay, there being no further questions or concerns on that article, let's go to Article number nine.
So Article nine is asking the town to accept the applicable provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54, B, C, and D, as may be necessary, to allow town trust funds to be invested in accordance with MGL, Chapter 203(c), which is also called the prudent investor rule. This will allow the funds that the treasurer is-- This will allow the funds that the treasurer is more or less managing for the town, trust funds and endowments that are managed by the town, it'll allow the treasurer to invest those funds in different ways than they are currently allowed to do, and that's due, as I understand it, that's due to a change in the law, which allows for towns to adopt this new rule.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, discussion? Okay, there being none, let's move on to Article 10.
Mr. Chair, Article 10, oh, thank you so much. Article 10 is, is to transfer the care, custody, and management and control of town-owned properties. These properties are the rear of Cedar Street, and they are general, these properties are landlocked. Right now, the Select Board and the administrative staff have been recently begun the process of examining and reviewing all of the parcels owned by the town, that are owned land, to determine whether these parcels are to be kept or whether they should go up for sale. This particular parcel, because of it being landlocked and having property owners surrounded by them that may wish to purchase the property, that is exactly what we're allowing. It's no use to the town because there's no way to get to it, but there are neighbors who would be interested.
Thank you. I think the one thing, two things to remember are, this is now land that is not being taxed, so it would be taxed, and second, it would go to a public auction or some kind of a public bidding process, so it's not necessarily just going to be given to someone who's adjacent to it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Have a quick question on, once those, once we are able to successfully auction off or sell those parcels, do the funds then go to the general fund, or do they go to local receipts? Where do the funds then go?
Jody, would you like to speak to that?
Jody Kersey. Jody Kersey, I'm the Finance Director here. So the sale of town-owned land, I don't have the exact statute for you, however, it would go to a special revenue fund. Those funds are actually supposed to be used for a capital purpose. That's what the law provides, the provision of the law is.
Thank you. Any further questions, concerns, discussion on this item? Okay, there being none, let's go to Article 11.
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
This also is transfer of care, custody, management, and control of town-owned property. It is adjacent to 141 Pleasant Street, and it would be, oh goodness, this too would be up to the town to decide how they're going to, whether it would be auctioned off or sold to surrounding abutters. It is also landlocked. It would then in turn go, as previously stated, if sold, the funds will go to the special revenue fund.
Any discussion, questions, concern? Okay, there being none, Article 12.
It's me, Mr. Chair. This is a water management bylaw. When certain events occur regarding the Charles River stream flow, this state mandated, Mr. Crown made sure it was state mandated, dated bylaw, applicable to users of the town's water system, triggers restrictions for public water use. Another requirement includes six inches of topsoil on all new construction. This bylaw allows for financial penalties of $50 for the first violation and $100 for subsequent violations. Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, again, as you pointed out, it's important to understand that this town has to eventually accept this statute and this bylaw. Otherwise, consequences can be enacted by the state for not adopting it. So as much as we may not like to see certain aspects of this, in terms of watering our lawns and so forth, we really don't have a choice, and that was discussed by Mr. McKay at length at one of our meetings. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this? Any discussion?
I would, I would add that it was discussed at length on October 9th in this meeting, and anybody that has more interest in it can review the Milis Community Media meeting from October 9th for the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, there being no further discussion, Article 13.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Article 13, this bylaw is technical and required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, whose goal is to diminish the phosphorus load onto the town's drainage systems and to increase the town's green infrastructure. Briefly, the town shall refrain from allowing the creation of impervious areas that prevent penetration of surface water. Approval by the Director of the Department of Public Works is required in many instances. This bylaw is the result of a study requested by the Enterprise Committee, and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this article. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think, again, it was pointed out to us by the DPW Director that this is a mandate from the state, and so we're simply complying with state law by enacting this bylaw. Any questions, concerns, or discussion? Okay, there being none, Article 14.
Speaking of state mandates, so Article 14 is our multifamily overlay district, which would bring us into compliance with the MBTA 3A Communities Act. This is a proposed new district that will allow multifamily to be built by right. According to the law's requirements, we are an adjacent community, and we are required to provide the capacity for a minimum of 750 units of housing on at least 50 acres by the end of this year. And Section 3A provides that any MBTA community that fails to comply with the 3A requirements will be ineligible for discretionary state funding, and that would be from several programs. So this proposed bylaw is 55 acres. It satisfies the requirements of the state. We have heard back from the state with some minor comments, which one of them, they apparently didn't read the bylaw very carefully because it was already answered in it. So we are pretty confident that it will meet the state's requirements, and it does preserve the smaller, more affordable neighborhoods within Milis. In your packet, you can see the proposed area, which is on either side of 109, and those districts are either underutilized or undeveloped or underdevelopment or in need of redevelopment.
Thank you, and I think the key point, as you, as you mentioned, is to point out that this does not, the town is not going to build on this. It allows private parties to construct housing, as stipulated herein on these parcels. So whether they ever get built or not, we don't know, but it would allow it, and I think the committee's done a great job in picking a couple of good locations that would enhance both the community and also the taxable land in those particular areas. Highest and best use of that land is not currently what it is, and housing would be a far higher value in terms of assessment, but that's my opinion.
Mr. Crown?
Yes.
If folks have any questions, as Mr. Sussman alluded to, as we were walking in the building, there is a video that was just put up on YouTube.
Excellent.
That has a discussion of the various aspects of this, and questions that folks may have are answered there by Bob Weiss and I. But if you have any further questions, you can always reach out to me or Bob Weiss, and we'll be happy to answer them for you as well.
And if you have any questions right now, are there any questions, concerns, discussions regarding this sworn article?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to notify the committee that I will be speaking to this town meeting in opposition. This committee has already voted, so I don't want to waste anybody's time talking about it. No one appreciates more the work that Jody has done on this committee, however, I just feel that you didn't have the proper people to help you working with this. The locations are fine, but, Mr. Chair, the actual bylaw itself and what it entails needs work, and the Supreme Judicial Court heard an argument on October 7th regarding the constitutionality and validity of this bylaw. To me, it just, as of today, they haven't rendered a decision. It just makes sense for the town to put off until this decision is written, and we know what guidelines versus regulations are the state mandates, because there was discussion at the SJC oral argument that guidelines are just that, suggestions, and I think the folks that were helping you out on the state level were misconstruing that and forcing many of these items onto the town needlessly. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other commentary, questions, concerns, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to add that the committee, I think, did a fantastic job on this. This MBTA community has been burdensome to other communities, but the way the committee has structured this is nothing but an advantage to the town of Milis, and I want to thank them for the hard work they've put in.
Thank you.
In rebuttal, might I just add, Mr. Chair, that although Jody started the committee like 2022 or 2023, this version of the bylaw before you has only been through two planning board meetings. The first one to discuss public discussion, and the second one to vote on. What was done in the prior two years were tossed in the trash can to start again, and I just believe it's time to revamp these bylaws. There's a great number of people that are in this town now and that are showing an interest in what they want. We should be including Glenn Ellen in discussions on what, to have on a committee to help this, but I just ask our three representatives to request a delay of this until June 30th or July 1st or something, so that we can just get a handle on this. 30,000, 30-foot structure, 39-foot structure, 20 feet setback from a street, there goes your light and air. The state didn't want a parking lot put in front of it, although the chief said it was okay to have it in the back, but the appearance that people would, residents would have, because there's a parking lot, this is what was stated in one of the meetings, that there was a parking lot that kind of looks like, well, maybe poor neighborhoods have big parking lots in the front, whereas if you would set it back and have some live greenery or something, there were alternatives that, there was neither the time nor the planning board didn't show it to their engineers to look at. Maybe give us a picture of what, what a three-story building looks like a few feet from the sidewalk and, and one parking space for a one-bedroom apartment. Well, if you, sometimes there's two people in it, where are these going to park, and this was a concern of some of the planning board members, where are these people going to park? If the building is under 10 units, no guest parking is required. Are they going to park on our public ways, on Curve Street? Where do they park when the snow, winter warning is out? That's every day, all the time. Just not enough planning was put in. They state mandate, do it, do it. No, no, let's sit back. We've been told that we have to build so many units. Let's figure out what they look like first and have a complete picture before we vote. This sweeping legislation that if you only knew how it could impact the town, 750 resident units in it, and just without any consideration to the cost impacts, the state was required, maybe you can answer this for me, Ms. Jody, to provide a fiscal study on how it would affect. And they, we were told at one of the public meetings, oh, we did the, it was good, then, but I haven't seen anything written to outline, show me how this is a fiscally responsible project. And then there was also a sustainability impact study that I haven't heard anything about, but the state was required to provide these documents to the town. And please correct me if I'm wrong on anything, Mr. McKay, you were at some of the meetings also, but, you know, it'll pass, it'll pass, and I've been told that, oh, if the SJC determines that, you know, page so-and-so is wrong, we'll just correct it. Why do we keep going back saying 22, 42 becomes 43 now? You know, let's get it right the first time. Our town is expanding. We have no money.
All right.
Please, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think two things, one, we've got to understand that it's mandated that we take a vote by December 31st, and if we don't take a vote by December 31st, then the state has the right to cut off funds for discretionary items that Ms. Garzon pointed out before. Second, I would just comment that we don't know what's going to be built there. We know what can be built there, but we know, we don't know what's going to be built there. So there may not be three-story buildings, there may not be, there could be underground parking, there could be many things. So I understand your point and your frustration, I certainly do, but I think, you know, we don't know what's going to be built there, so we can't really say right now what it's going to look like. What it could look like, it could be anything, but again, yes, Jim?
Thank you. I'm here tonight as a member of the Milis Planning Board, and as Kathy stated, there was two hearings that Jody came and presented. One was completely different than the other. We did take a vote, and it was a four-to-one vote, and I was the only one that was against the project, and for most of the reasons that Kathy had stated. So we won't have to rehash all that. We'll do that at town meeting. So I just want to let you know, the planning board did hear these two times, and it was a four-to-one vote in favor of the project moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to clarify again, from Jody, if you can clarify, that this doesn't, these lots are buildable as they are already. Anybody can come in tomorrow and build whatever they want on it, as long as it complies with the current zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so approving this is not going to change that, correct?
Right.
It's an overlay.
So just want to make sure.
It's an overlay district.
Right, okay.
Which means you could build under its current zoning?
Right.
Or this allows for additional types of construction as an overlay over that current zoning?
You know, Mr. Chair, we were, many people asked what grants would be taken away, and I don't know if we ever received any sort of documentation as to what would be. I apologize if we did receive something.
Yep.
Would you like to discuss?
I mean, one of the most, I think, one of the most compelling sources of funds that could be taken away is, it's kind of a hand-in-glove situation, where if we have this overlay district over the GAF site, which has been abandoned for a long time, it has the potential to be a brownfield site. If a developer wants to come in and develop that, and we have not passed this bylaw, we will not have access to state discretionary funds that will allow us to work with a developer to redevelop that site.
And clean it up.
And clean it up. There are brownfield sites, there's Main Street, I mean, Bob Weiss knows this stuff in and out. I am not in state government or whatever.
And I think he, well, he came in, excuse me, he did come at our meeting when we discussed this in full. There was a great discussion that he had with a lot of information that Jody's referring to, which talked about that, what could be lost, what was available, the types of things that could help the town by passing this if a developer did want to come in, the type of assistance that the state would give. Again, if you want to look at that meeting, I don't remember the exact date of it, but if you go through the list, you'll see that we did have that discussion at the meeting, and it is up on the website, if anybody has any further concerns about that.
And in, under the, I'm not sure exactly how it's phrased, on the town website at this point, but the MBTA 3A Advisory Committee, part of the town website, has all sorts of other links and, and information that folks can access. At the end of the day, I do not feel that this bylaw and district are bad for the town of Milis. I feel like it is, we're forced to do it, we didn't ask to do it, but it will be to our benefit, and it's not going to be to our detriment to pass this. I don't see a whole lot of downside to passing this district for Milis. It's parcels, like I mentioned, that are underdeveloped, undeveloped, vacant, and it has the potential to really be a benefit to the town. Of course, that's my personal view, but we have done everything that we needed to do in order to have a viable bylaw that the town meeting can vote on, and, and that's the purpose of town meeting, to discuss these things on the open, and the town can decide if this is what the town wants to pass and go forward and be in compliant with the state mandate, or if it wants to, as Kathy has mentioned, to wait and see if they change the law, if some of the requirements are guidelines. The state has to kind of, the state still has some work to do on this, but at the end of the day, I don't feel like what we have presented is going to be substantially different than what will end up being passed at the end of the day, because I don't think the state is going to walk back their requirement.
You don't know that, it's a court, right, Mr. Crown?
We don't know.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion, questions, concerns on this sworn article? There being none, can we look at Article 15?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is an amendment to the Milis zoning bylaws. It is to add a new definition to Section 2. The definition is as follows: Private dog park, recreational facility with a minimum of 5,000 square feet of enclosed indoor space used for on- and off-leash recreation, blah, 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 and training of dogs. The facility also will include a fenced-in outdoor recreational space. The license The license sale of alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages for consumption will be allowed to, permissible. And no private dog park shall include a sit-down, full restaurant service. This would be under, if, this would be only allowed in the industrial IP and IP-2 by Special Permitting Board, and will require approval by the Planning Board. This was submitted by the Planning Board, and if approved, it would be added as Section 43.
Is there any discussion, questions, or concerns regarding this warrant article? All right, there being none. Article 16.
Oh, lucky me. Mr. Chair, this also is to amend the Milis zoning bylaws, as most recently amended by amending the various sections identified in the warrant, provided that the new section shall be numbered 44, as long as Article 15 passes. If it does not pass, it will remain Article 43. This is to add new definitions to Section 2, and that would be as follows: Artisanal and craftmaker space, artisanal and craftmaker space or gallery, including display and retail sales of arts and crafts created, produced, or manufactured. To insert a new principal use, number 44 to Table 1, use regulation under Retail and Service as follows, current zoning bylaw, page 31. This would amend Section V, use regulation Table 1, use regulation Retail Service, principal use number 6, which would be a drive-up window, by changing from N, not permitted, to SPB, permitted by Special Permitting Board, Planning Board, in the CV-2 zoning district. This was, will require approval by the Planning Board and was submitted by the Planning Board. The Finance Committee unanimously voted for this.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns or discussion regarding this article? All right, there being none. Article 17. Who has this one?
That is me.
Sarah.
Article 17. This article is authorizing the town to transfer the sum of $25,000 to the unemployment account. The town is self-insured and therefore must set aside funds in a special account in order to pay out unemployment. This is just replenishing funds into the account, and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this.
Any questions, discussion, concerns on this article? There being none. Article 18.
Article 18 is a vote for the town to move $50,000 to the OPEB trust fund account. We currently have about $310,000 in our other post-employment benefits trust fund account, and our estimated future obligations are about $50 million. So, you know, $50,000 helps move us a very small step forward.
I would add, having been in another town on various boards, one being the OPEB Board, that even incremental additions to this mount up over the years. And it's smart that we begin to do this on a regular basis, because what we're really talking about here is health insurance for retirees, other post-employment benefits. And they add up to a significant sum, as you've indicated. So when we start to do these things, it not only helps us put money in the bank, but it also helps us with respect to our bond rating, which is going to be very important when we do building projects. And when the bond rating agencies see that we are planning for the future, even in smaller amounts, but planning for the future, they take that into consideration on a favorable basis. Any discussion on this? Okay, there being none. Article 19.
That's me, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
All right. Article 19 is a petition article, a citizen's petition, that would petition the Select Board and School Committee to place a three-year salary freeze on all town employees and union contracts. While the Finance Committee appreciates the effort put in to presenting the petition before town meeting, the Finance Committee believes that this petition is not in the best interest of the town of Milis, and we voted unanimously to recommend dismissal of this article.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Was it determined to be, like, illegal, or we just said it wasn't in the best interest?
At the last-
I am not speaking to the legality of that. I'll leave that to town council.
Oh, I thought someone, I thought someone did.
At the last meeting, it was indicated by Mr., by Mike Gesinski, that he had spoken with town council, but you can reiterate that if you'd like.
Mike Gesinski, Town Administrator. Wasn't sure I was going to get up here this evening, so I just submitted onto the line.
Just keeping things moving.
So, yes, we have conferred with town council on this item, and this item is unenforceable. This power does not rest with town meeting. Town meeting's power in this area rests with the funding of contracts, not with the negotiation or execution of contracts. So the ability to sign contracts and to authorize them on behalf of the town lies with both the Select Board and the School Committee solely in their power.
So I'm willing to change my discussion. But my question is, so I put it, this article would petition the Select Board and the School Committee. I did not say require, I didn't, I said it would just, if it passed, it would then present that.
It would certainly be a petition of town meeting to those boards to consider that.
Right. But I would, I just didn't want to get into the legality or the enforceability about that. I would leave that to town council to address unless you feel I should put this in the discussion up.
I mean, we can talk afterwards.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
If there are questions, specific questions on the legality come up at town meeting, I would recommend it be deferred to town council.
Okay. I'll send you this, and we can talk about it before town meeting.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
I would like to just recommend that we get an answer before town meeting, and I would prefer that, I voted against it, Mr. Chair, thinking that it was not a legal document before us. And I would not, how you phrased your motion, Mr. Underhill, so I would, hopefully, there would be some consideration to the stating that the Finance Committee said that it was improperly or not legally before us.
Fair enough. I will share this with Mr. Gesinski and legal counsel and make sure it's crafted appropriately.
Very good.
I think the time to discuss salaries, wages, expenses is at town meeting, when these come before us. We meet, and we will start to meet probably in January, to discuss all of the town budgets. And that includes school budgets and all employee and expense budgets of the town. We encourage you to participate, ask questions at that time. We will have the full budgets before us, we will have every line item before us, they will be published for everyone to look at. They are voluminous, and they can be overwhelming sometimes, especially with the amount of town employees we have, and the amount of expenses and line items that are in those budgets. But they will be available in ample time for discussions prior to town meeting in May, and we do encourage you to participate with us in those discussions. We'll be here pretty much for the whole winter and into the spring, almost a weekly basis, to discuss these things. So happy to have you show up at those times.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you just, Town Clerk is here, Acting Town Clerk, does she care to add anything about the town meeting process or how things are going? No? Okay. You were just here to watch.
Yeah, she just went through a big one. All right. I think that ends the discussion with respect to the articles. If there are no further discussion, no further discussion, or if there are no further questions, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. There being none, let's look at bills payable.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the payment of $8,360.96 to our town publishing for the publishing and mailing of the FinCom report.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? These were for the publishing of our warrant book and the postage associated with it. I'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Being unanimous, Deirdre. I'm going to pass this around for your signatures.
I'm going to get yours.
What's that? Yeah, I got to put mine on there, too. Deirdre produce the minutes from our meeting on October 30th?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 30th FinCom meeting as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Deirdre.
There being no discussion, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're welcome.
It was unanimous, Deirdre. Any board and committee liaison updates?
We can't adjourn until everyone signs.
Yeah, yeah.
I will do that.
I will do that, Deirdre. Any discussion on liaisons or anything? No? Okay. Any old business or new business?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You move to adjourn?
Not yet, not yet, not yet. Not yet. I would like to say I was encouraged that so many people did attend today.
Yes.
Both virtually and in person, so that's great. I hope we continue to get participation like that. Even if you don't ask a question, it's nice to see you here in the anticipation that you maybe do have a question, and we're here to answer those questions for you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, go ahead, Jody.
Are we meeting early and where?
What's that?
We're meeting early and where?
That's what I was going to say.
You know, I'm going to let John pick that, because I'm not going to be here. Yeah.
It'll be 7 o'clock.
So you can pick it, Peter.
7:00 PM, Room 104.
Deirdre.
Deirdre's saying something.
Deirdre, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if we really need to meet prior, but I scheduled it for 7 o'clock, which is typical.
You just want, you just want to get the lottery going, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's good to get us organized.
All right. Any further discussions?
I think we have 15.
7:05.
7:00 it is. 7:00 it is, Deirdre. Same location where it always is?
Yep, 104.
Room 104?
Yeah.
Okay.
Room 104.
All right, great, great.
And for town meeting members, the meeting starts at 7:30 at the middle school, high school auditorium, so be there, be square.
And there's no special.
No, no special town meeting. It'll be adjourned, it'll be called and then adjourned, because the vote at the ballot was a negative, and therefore no need for a town, a town bylaw, I mean, excuse me, a town meeting vote on the budget item. All right, I'll take a motion.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?[1779.73]